Tonight is, welcome, we open the planning board meeting at 6:30. Welcome, everybody. We'll call Laura Tenney.
Here.
Lauren Brewster.
Here.
Chris Lawny.
Here.
I'm Sarah Creighton.
Sue Bobbitt.
Here.
Peter Morton.
Here.
Mary Foley.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, everybody. It didn't make it onto the agenda, but I want to acknowledge correspondence. I think we had a public notice from Wenham and a copy of a letter from the Tallets to their neighbor concerning access over Orchard Lane.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, there is one question in the chat about public comment. We will take public comment at various points during the meeting. Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
Because when that application was in front of us, we were told, and I think it's in the meeting minutes actually, that the easement was extended and that's why they could do this. So, obviously, from the letter, the easement was not extended. So, has the planning board, one, issued a response? How did we even get the letter? Because it wasn't to the planning board.
Yep. So, another quick thing, just administratively, sorry, and I'll get to your question. Mark Resnick, our planner, is out with a personal emergency plan, so he will not be joining us. So, he may be able to help with the question. So, but, so there are two things. One is, while the app, the, this is my opinion, but I think it's accurate, the engineer who came indicated that there, I think, I remember the same as you, that there was an easement over Orchard Street. But the A&R had its frontage on Forster. So, the A&R was, had access over Forster. Whether or not there's an easement to access that property and whether or not that was properly represented doesn't change the fact that there was frontage on Forster Road. That's at least my opinion. So, then your second question is Cindy Tallet contacted me, because I know her by text, and I asked her to send a letter to the board. And that's the letter she submitted.
Okay.
So, and I let her know that I had shared it with the whole board. So, it was not to the planning board, it was to her, the other.
Okay. So, currently, our A&R, so the discussion, I think, was that the frontage, okay, so if they build anything, they'll have to figure it out.
They have to figure it out, right.
Thank you.
We didn't give them any implicit access over that.
No.
Okay, no, good question, thank you. Any other correspondence that we had? I don't see any. Do you have any email correspondence to the whole board? That's, okay, the next item is just to bring everybody up to speed on where we are with the zoning changes for annual town meeting. We're not really going to be talking about them unless somebody has a urgent matter that should be addressed, but I believe that the warrant has been voted, no?
The warning is in progress.
Thursday.
Thursday, okay. The warrant will be voted Thursday, so if we have any urgent, or, you know.
That's me, sorry.
No problem.
Can I just make a few comments?
Yeah, so let me just, before we do that, we're going to have a public hearing on April 7. Shannon, can you just confirm that that was, first of all, can you just confirm you can hear us? But I haven't seen any, okay, thank you. And that was posted for April 7?
Good evening.
Did that make it into the paper?
It did.
Okay, great, thank you. And so, that is off cycle of our regular meetings. And the reason we did that is because we have so many challenges with Zoom. It's important that we have the public meeting and a requirement to have it before town meeting. If there's a Zoom problem that night, we get Zoom bombed, or a posting is wrong, we can post the next day and we still have time to have a hearing. So, it's an, it's a, you know, we've learned our lesson here that we need to plan for the eventualities of, and that will actually be in, on the 7. So, and just to bring people up to speed, we did hold a public hearing on the ADU, the standard ADUs, the large ADUs, and the short-term rental prohibition and the associate members, at which point we also talked about the site planner view, zoning introduction, and the floodplain bylaw. But all of those have had, been posted for a, another, or a first public hearing for April 7. Okay, Mary, go ahead.
Well, and I won't go through all the little things, but just.
So, if you have typos, we did authorize Mark to make any scribners error, any, you know, non-substantive changes, so please get them to him.
Okay.
First thing in the morning.
I just had, I had a question on 9.1.2.1. It's talking about that exterior.
In which bylaw? Oh, that's the, is that the standard?
Protected ADU.
Okay.
That exterior elevation shall be submitted for any application requiring in addition to any building for habitable space. What about a detached ADU? Are we not asking for elevations?
We, I think we just asked for, for that. It probably should have been for both.
I would add for detached as well. And then number three does the same thing, it just says just for an addition. So, I would say for an addition.
Okay.
Detached.
Mary, which one are you referring to?
So, on the.
9.1.
9.1.2.1, 2 and 3. So, where it says, "Submitment and design requirements."
In the standard ADU.
Yeah, on the standard ADU.
And yours.
It's actually on both.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
Okay, that's a good suggestion.
So, I would change it on all those.
Does anybody object to that?
Well, I'm not sure I heard exactly what it was.
The engineering plans need to be submitted, not just when it's in addition to an existing building, but also for a detached accessory dwelling.
Engineering plans, meaning mechanical, electrical, plumbing.
No elevation.
Elevation, sorry.
Structural place.
No elevation.
Look and feel.
Well, you've got, you've got elevations as part of it already.
It just says for the addition, not if it's detached.
For any application requiring in addition to any building for habitable space.
So, I'm just saying you need to add for detached ADUs as well.
Right now, it just says if you're make, it could be interpreted as if it's just an addition. Okay.
Okay. So, that's in number 2 and number 3, and then also in number 7.
Okay.
On each one. And was it decided to take out that these accessory structures don't have to go by our accessory structure bylaw, or what?
We did it with the, in the large, in the protected, we can't. And in the large, we decided to, that's where the, anything that's built after town meeting would handle.
It also says for the protected and for the large, it, on each one, it says, you know, you can only have one protected, and then the large says you can only have one large. But does that mean you can have a protected and a large?
Unclear by law, state statute.
I guess that, for me, that would be an argument to put a pause on the large, but, and we reference short-term rentals as defined in Mass. general law, but we also have a general. I mean, we also have a, yes, a general bylaw for short-term rentals. Why would we not reference that?
I believe that the short-term, it's got a different name, it's.
It's Article 10.
Yeah.
But wouldn't we be, that's what we would be.
The state law, we, I guess.
The state law is 30 days, our law is 6 days. We would, I first prefer that we use the state definition.
I think her point is we should reference both. I think that a turn, that the state sort of is all encompassing, is the determination.
So. So, in the large one, 9.1.3.1.7, it says, "All additions to large accessory dwelling units shall comply with lot coverage, et cetera." Wouldn't you, if you did an addition to an already established large, wouldn't you need a special permit?
I think you, a special permit is a requirement of a large. By definition, it's already included. Large ADs need a special.
And changes to large need a.
Okay.
And did we find out who's enforcing the off-street parking on these?
Zoning officer is the building inspector.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. So, if people have questions, please comment, or comments on April 7. And I think we also should have thought about, at least I've thought a little bit about, perhaps, and maybe asked Sue to think briefly about how we also get the word out, and perhaps do a little bit of a forum on Saturday, or another, an off, off night, off meeting night, more of an informal conversation about these bylaws, particularly the ADU one. So, any thoughts?
I think it's a good idea. We heard from many residents that the forums were very helpful. This is much simpler than MBTA zoning, but I think people will start tuning in, you know, a week or so before town meeting. So, my recommendation would be sometime during the week before town meeting, maybe the Saturday before.
Okay. That's probably, yeah, I think we should definitely do that. Well, we'll look at the calendar and work back on the 7th, or maybe we'll set a date and see what people.
And I would also make one other recommendation, and that is because there are several different zoning articles, that we split them up, and each of us sort of take the lead in knowing the details of that particular one, if they're able to attend the forum. But that, it kind of, I think it helps to have as many members involved as we can.
All right, so in following up to that, I'll get back to each of you with a suggested thing to speak on.
Great.
Sure, excellent idea.
Yeah, okay, great. Any other issue? I will pass those changes to Mark, pass on to the, the, elevations, for additions and detached in those three bylaws. Okay, any other things on the zoning? Great, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Karen.
Hold on one second.
This is Shannon, I have a question, just a procedural question with that.
Okay.
Are we talking about floor amendments? Like, if there, if there needs to be anything that needs to be changed, would that be, would the plan be for a floor amendment at town meeting?
No, I think the, the plan is to have the warrant reflect these changes.
Oh, cool, okay.
Yeah, thank you for checking in.
Okay.
Okay, great, the next, oh, sorry, somebody had a question.
I just had one more.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, was it with the protected ADU? It says it's not allowed in the LCD, yet we just did the MBTA overlays that allow housing in the LCD. I'm not sure how the state would say, "No, you can't have it there if you allow housing."
Not a single, the state is that it's a single, it's a district that allows single residential housing, and that is not the LCD. It allows multifamily, and that's not single. So.
Okay, okay.
I am not going to take comments on the zoning, because we're going to have a public hearing on the 7th, and we've got a lot of other business tonight. So, please reach out to us if you have questions, or come on the 7th, or both, or the forum that you will hear about. And there is also, these changes are available on the town's website. Great, the next order of business is the approval not required application for 9 Ashland Ave Quay LLC. Who's here from that? Is there anybody here from, from that? Who will not require? Okay. Well, I think we still have to act on it.
Well, do we have, how many days, 21 or 22?
Yeah, I was just looking, what's the date on it? I don't have it printed.
March 10.
Right, we have Monday's. 31st, right? I can do that now.
No, 20, right? Oh, yeah, you're right, yeah.
Yeah. So, the plan is to divide 9 Ashland Ave, just pull up the plan, into two lots.
Three lots.
I'm going to pull it up, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Sue, because I have a conflict of interest on this. So, I'll let you decide how you're going to handle it.
Okay. Well, I think we still need to deliberate on it. So, I can't bring the whole plan up.
I'm bringing it, I'm sorry, I can bring it up.
That would be great. We did have this planned before today.
So, are we to interpret what they mean by the smart?
Well, they did.
It's a bit of a challenge.
It is a challenge.
They also.
I couldn't quite understand what they wanted to, I think I do know, it's that little sliver at the bottom, is that right?
Well, I think what they're doing is they're dividing this entire parcel into two lots.
Creating this?
But they haven't stated that in their application.
It's like three lots to me. A, A1, and A2.
Does anyone see where in their application they stated which?
No.
I mean, to me, that's not complete.
It's completely unclear.
Yeah, the drawing should be a little bit more clarity to what their intentions are.
So, I'm going to throw out a couple of questions I had.
Sure.
I'm just going to postpone it.
I think you have to either, no, they're not here, you can come. Procedurally, I'm going to speak on the procedure, because I can't speak to this particular one. I think procedurally, you can approve or deny, or perhaps deny with some sort of condition that you request an extension for them to, if you feel it applies.
Personally, I don't feel comfortable.
No.
Selecting anything.
I agree.
I don't know exactly what they wanted to do.
I think we should state that the application is incomplete and should be resubmitted.
Yes, I agree.
I move.
Any discussion?
Okay, let's think about, all those in favor of the motion?
Well, I guess I would ask, ask. I've never seen in the A&R handbook that you like postpone the application, or like, I think you either have to accept it or deny it.
Well, the applicant can request an extension, and we can agree to that.
But they haven't asked.
They haven't asked.
We're simply stating it's incomplete, incomplete.
But I think, again, I, and I could be wrong, but if somebody can look it up, I thought it says you have to accept or deny. There's not like an in-between.
Well, my. Can I offer something, can I, can I make a shot at what I think they're looking at here?
No.
I read all their words, and the only thing I see is said, "New lot line." New lot line, sounds like that's what they're moving towards, but it's, it's the bottom boundary of the, of the entire par, both parcels. And that's the only thing I can see that defines what they intend to do.
I think that's a fair reading, but I really feel like it's their burden to bring the application itself to explain what they're asking us to find.
I agree.
I really do. So, where, my recommendation would be to deny it without prejudice, and they can file it, they can file a new application.
Right.
I would agree with that.
Did you do that already, by the way?
That's a different motion.
That's a different motion. Would you want to withdraw your original motion?
Yes, I will withdraw, pending your new one.
Okay. I move that we deny this application without prejudice on the basis that the application is incomplete, or not able to deliverate the merits of the application. Sorry. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in paper?
Okay. Sustained. Great, thank you, Sue. Okay, the next application is for a approval not required for 22 Union Street, 22 Union Street LLC. So, do we have anybody from 22 Union Street?
I'm on Zoom, I'm so sorry. I thought that I was okay.
It is okay. Thank you. Can you just.
I'm on here.
Your name, please, and, your name and who you are representing?
Of course. It's Carla Moyan, I'm attorney for Sheridan Lodge in Boston, and I represent 22 Union Street. James Longley is the manager, who signed the application.
Okay. Can you walk us through, I can give you, I can share the plan, or you can share it, it's probably easiest for me.
It's probably the easiest for you, you have it on your computer, thank you.
Okay.
So, this is fairly straightforward, I'm obviously happy to answer any questions from the board. This is a division of attractive land that is not a subdivision, because it shows a division into two parcels, only one of which is buildable, that is Lot A. Parcel B is clearly delineated in the notes as a non-buildable lot. And Lot A does comply with the frontage and lot area.
And what is the odd-shaped parcel that is, that indicates the driveway and the little skinny piece, and then the?
Easement area? Coming with the.
Yeah, this, I can't, I don't know if you can see my cursor, this, what is this area here, and this little skinny piece, and this?
So, so the entire lot actually goes down, okay, over that driveway area. So, the, if you, if you go around, and I, and I believe you have, I can provide to you, if you take the meets and miles of the monument, at the very, very upper corner, it says Monument to be Set, and you go down, it goes across 1815, and then down by 1416, and then straight over by 6153, and then further down along the land owned by Andrea, Anna, or formerly Lance and Weaver, by 5512, and then along the frontage, obviously with some curves, so bear with me, I'm not an engineer, but along Union Street, all the way back over and up along the driveway. So, that comprises Lot A. Lot B is just.
I'm sorry, what is this, I'm sorry to interrupt you. What is this hard line that is?
Building itself. The actual improvement that's there? It's an existing building?
So, this is the hard line, that's building, this is the building line?
So, is parcel B just parcel B, and everything else is A?
Thank you, that's, I apologize, that's a much easier way of saying it.
You're there.
Flip that, yes.
So, I guess my question with, that would be, this, then with this building makes this, it's not a non-conforming lot, but now the structure on it is non-conforming, because you have no setback. Is your, is your intent to take the building down?
Can you say that the building has no setback?
Well, you need a rear setback. The rear setback of 10 feet, I think.
Has a rear setback of, it, it matches the rear setback. So, when you look at the 134, it's off the corner, that is the rear setback. So, we do have that, up in the varying corner.
Yeah.
Right there, all the way to the left is along the line of the pulvers.
Oh, that's, but that's a side setback, that's not the rear setback.
The right up, 13.4 is the rear, and 13.3 is the side.
Yeah, but this, but, that's only from a corner, this is.
You need the full setback all along the back of the.
The proper edge of that, the back of the building.
And chapter of the survey, based on the way that we could do that, and that was appropriate.
Well, that's, that may be his interpretation, but that's.
No, no, you're the planning board, but I'm just saying, from my standpoint, you're, if that is correct, it's a zoning issue that will need to be addressed, but not with respect to the subdivision, I mean, the A&R.
Correct, I mean, I think we'd have to say on the A&R that this creates a non-conforming structure. Well, that.
Also, you can't, yeah, it wouldn't. Oh, yeah. So, parcel B has no frontage.
Right, that's my problem.
And that's purposeful, I mean, it literally creates a non-buildable lot, so we noted that.
Because they're saying on the notes that it could be combined with a lot that abuts it.
Right.
So, that's probably the plan.
Well, to Mary's point, though, if we take down, are you taking down that, the front building, the existing building, down, down to ground?
No, there's any intention at this point to do so.
Okay.
But again, from a, from a standpoint of presenting to you for endorsement and determination that you could sign this as an A&R plan, so long as we delineate, match up with purposes of Lot A, for purposes of showing lot area frontage, and then with respect to the other parcel that we're not showing, an additional lot that would otherwise comply with the subdivision and create a subdivision, then we are permitted to have an A&R plan endorsed.
But I do think you have to meet the setbacks, and I don't, I mean, I wish we had somebody here that we could ask, that, that, can you create a lot that's then making the existing building that you want to keep there a non-conforming? I don't know that A&R can make a non-conforming structure and make it seem like that's an okay structure to have there then, because it's not meeting the setbacks. I mean, not the setbacks, it's not meeting the, let me do this.
I believe that the A&R is entitled, we, while we do make divisions like this, when it's explicitly joined to another property that has frontage, we are not obligated, I'm looking at the A&R handbook right now, the first test is that there's adequacy of a way and frontage. There's no frontage, and there's no, there's no access to that parcel, B, parcel B. That's the first thing. The second thing is to, that I would like to get input on from council, is since we have the same question at Pine Street, right? We're creating a non-conformity, and in that case, the plan, I believe, showed that the non-conforming structure was at least going to be demolished, whether they carry through on that. There's no indication that that's going to be demolished, so we're creating two non-conformities. We're creating a parcel B with no access and no frontage, and a building that is at that rear setback.
Well, in point of fact, nothing in this conforms to any setback or lot coverage requirements.
Right.
It's all non-conforming. It is now, it'll be. It is now, it'll be worse afterwards.
Right.
But I don't know that we can add to the non-conforming in such a drastic way.
Well, that's an interesting question. I think the more salient point is that this parcel B is unbuildable and doesn't conform to any of the lot size requirements and has no frontage on Union Street. So I think we're entitled to deny it.
But no, that's okay, I mean, an A and R can have a non-buildable lot. We just have to say it's non-buildable.
Well, yeah, that's true, it notes that it is. But it's supposed to have access and frontage.
Reading the A and R handbook right here, a court agreed that in citing, I think, found that the planning board did not exceed its authority in refusing to endorse a plan because the plan showed, oh, sorry, did not show adequate way.
I don't know that it has to, like, a non-buildable lot has to have the frontage. I mean, we've done a lot where we've given a sliver of land to somebody else some way back. I don't see that so much of an issue as the structure being here and that meeting.
Shannon, our packet does not have the application in it. Maybe it was in the paper.
It should.
Oh, I'm sorry, it does.
It does?
It does.
Well, no, it wasn't online.
Yeah, it's online as well.
Oh, sorry.
There are specific cases, and I know that you don't have counsel present this evening, but there are specific cases that literally have this instance in mind, specifically Whelan versus Zoning Board Appeals of Norfolk for the record. And, you know, the plan submitted to the planning board in that case, you know, was an approval not required plan. And in citing back to, you know, another mass land court case that says that, you know, the statutory definition of the terms subdivision quote-unquote and lot, in instances where a landowner submits a plan that divides his or her land, but labels on that plan some of the land involved to show clearly it's not available for building, and that if you have a clear label to that extent, which we do here, disclaiming any ability to use that land, being parcel B in this instance, for purposes of that, that it would have to be, takes the plan out of the definition of subdivision, titles us to an endorsement. I mean, obviously, we would address concerns subsequently if we chose to do further development to the property.
Still don't know if you can create a non-conforming lot, I believe, that has an existing structure on it.
You know that there's someone else in the audience that's there that would include Adam Zager?
Yeah, Adam Zager. My wife Cindy has been the broker involved in the project. We own the building across the street and I've been working with Chris and Carla. This is a plan that specifically is designed to create a non-buildable lot. And it's an exception to the rule. Sometimes they refer to them as one lot subdivision plans, so the point is it's clearly labeled as non-buildable. It doesn't have to have frontage, but it is an exception to the A and R rules and it does require endorsement. And the fact that it's going to show a separate, you know, it looks like it would be an apparent zoning violation, we all have to remember that as long as they're in common ownership, it's one lot for zoning purposes. So you wouldn't create that zoning violation with the setback until it's separately conveyed and it's in two different owners. So that's really, that's all, like Carla mentioned, that's part of the development process and we'll have to determine that later, but...
Are you representing the applicant?
Yes.
You are representing the applicant?
Yes. So, you can take that with a grain of salt, but I'm just telling you, that's the answer to your question about showing the apparent zoning violation, is that it doesn't become a violation until you've actually deed it out and create that separate lot and knows where things will be at that point.
Well, if you split a lot, they become two lots, whether they're in the same ownership or not.
But if they're in common ownership for zoning purposes, they are one lot.
The issue is that it creates a non-conforming property now because of the non-conformity of the structure on it. And I would like legal counsel's opinion on that.
I agree with you, Mary. I'd like to get my counsel's opinion. Trust you.
No, no, sure.
But we have to make the decision.
Can I ask a leading question here? The thing I find puzzling about this is that it limits the potential for future development of this lot, which is a large vacant building on it.
You're talking about what is the danger for this lot?
Yes.
I agree, that makes...
So I'm kind of curious as to why you're going to do this.
It's just a conceptual subdivision plan. And I think part of that, it delineates where the parking lot is, you're going to be able to have a legal description for where the parking lot would be, it's clearly non-buildable, it's just housekeeping that many developers engage in.
I think you have to park it on the same lot as the structure.
Again, this is just an A and R, you're getting way ahead of things with starting to talk about zoning.
It's just one step in a very long process.
Yeah, this is area and frontage, and there's a very specific case law exception to the area and frontage requirements for these plans that show the sliver. This is essentially, excuse me, this is essentially a sliver plan. Nothing more, nothing less. And it's shown as non-buildable, there's no intent to build there, it delineates the parking lot, so it's going to be useful and it's allowed under subdivision control law.
Probably read things in the A and R handbook when a building straddles two lots, which this wouldn't do, but it would, in essence, do it because it doesn't have the setback. It's not approvable.
But in fact, if this line is drawn and it is divided, not subdivided, but divided, and they still ownership of parcel B, they haven't really created a non-conformity by drawing that line there.
Right.
Well, they have because it's two separate deeds, right? You can't, like, just because it's common ownership, it's two separate deeds.
It's not two separate deeds, we're not going to hang out.
It's not being transferred to any other ownership. He still owns it, he just...
But again, that's not even in our purview to say what they're going to do in the future or not do, right? Like, you can't do it based on common ownership now.
We would have to come back and make you happy with respect to whatever we did in the future.
That's when you would create the zoning violation, is if you, the property is owned by an LLC right now, you have it, nothing, title hasn't changed. You've got a new subdivision plan or A and R plan endorsed that shows these two new lots. The second that you recorded deeds conveying those two lots to different parties with the building existing, that's when the zoning violation would be created. And that's, it's not part of the A and R analysis.
I think with something as big, we need legal counsel.
We have a, would the applicant be willing to grant us a time to talk with council so we can make sure that we all do the right thing?
Extension beyond...
So an extension beyond, first, yeah, to our next regular business meeting, which is the second Monday of April, April 14th, I believe.
Just, sorry, trying to text Chris.
Checking the date. It's the 14th. I mean, Adam, and I understand what you're saying, but there's nothing in our, that, I mean, the building exists, so basically we're making it...
No, there's, until, as long as those are owned by, as long as those are owned by the same entity, they're one lot for zoning purposes. So, you wouldn't create any kind of zoning violation until you convey it out. And there's A and R plans also, all the time, that show zoning violations, they have to be noted on the plan. There's the general note also, nothing in the A and R endorsement ratifies or confirms anything for zoning purposes. So the board always has the protection that you're not making any kind of determination whatsoever regarding the building or compliance. This is just a, I mean, I imagine you may see more of these before town meeting with folks filing in our...
I have spoken, we're good, we all, okay? We want you to be comfortable, and we do agree you're going to see more of these, and I feel very comfortable after speaking with council. I would actually encourage if you could have your counsel contact me, my information is on the cover letter of the submission in the interim, that would be helpful for the board.
Great. So I'll take a motion to accept the applicant's, if you can just send us an email to this effect as well, please, to have a record reflect that the applicant has agreed to wait until April 14th. If we can potentially squish it in on the 7th, we might, but we'll be in touch with you on that, but April 14th, and thank them for their willingness to agree to an extension. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're unanimous, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, we'll put you on first at the next meeting.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
I'll come in here up first and then I'll...
It's fine, thank you. I think it's a simple question. All right, great, thank you. Shannon, can you make sure that gets on first at the April 14th meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. All right, my next up is the open, the continued public hearing for 206 Summer Street, special permit for the... So I'll take a motion to open public, continue public hearing. So moved.
I can.
Laura Penny? Laura Fisher?
Yes.
Chris? There are votes.
Yes.
Yes.
Peter and Mary?
Yes.
Okay, Mary and Peter, you weren't here at the last meeting, have you guys had a chance to look at the tape?
Yep.
Okay, great. And you just need to let town clerk know that you didn't.
I did that.
Okay, thanks.
Send it to the board.
Yeah, thanks. Go ahead. You introduce yourself.
My name's Tom Sax, I'm an engineer with Hancock Associates. With me tonight, I have Gold Masah, who's with Seaside Legal via Zoom. We also have James Emanuel, he's a landscape architect for James Emanuel. And then lastly, Tim Curtis is also online, he's the building architect for the project.
I just gave, if you want to share anything, I just gave, made you close on.
There we go.
Just before we start, just people listening, we will take public comment. So at some point during this hearing, but we want to hear from the applicant first and from the board. Okay, go ahead.
All right, great, thank you. Just a quick recap, so the last time we were here, we discussed the civil plan, this is the plan that we had in our last meeting. Basic recap is, we're proposing a single-family dwelling of Thomas Hill. The proposed driveway is approximately 300 feet long. It's designed for fire code, so it's a maximum of 15% slope with a hammerhead turnaround at the parking court. For stormwater purposes, we propose infiltration trench along the northern side of the driveway. Your purview favors in the driveway to reduce the previous area. And the back patio underneath is a crushed stone detention area where we are mitigating the rainfall from the house. So, just that quick recap, and also we have the septic at the bottom of the driveway. As mentioned before, the retaining wall up against the septic is approximately 10 feet tall at its highest point, but does gradually get shorter as you move up the driveway with the 15% slope. So, last time we were here, the board requested that we bring on a landscape architect and basically consult them to revise our civil drawings. So in the past two weeks, we did bring on a landscape architect, so we have James Emanuel. I do have his plan here. And so we put together a planting plan, and James, if you're there, would you have a minute to discuss your design?
Sure, I'm here.
Is that not updated?
If you have a plan, I can put it up on my screen because that's preferable.
Yeah, if you could put it up, I'm having...
I'm going to make you co-host. We should be able to do that.
All right, thank you, good, yeah. Okay, hopefully everyone can see the landscape plan here.
Yes, we did.
As you can see, we've got the same general configuration of the driveway, 15% slope, hammerhead, and the house site at this portion of the lot with the access drive, there's some stormwater infiltration systems I managed on happening at the front of the lot here as well. When I was brought here, I was looking at a few things to kind of refine on this plan and to add some landscape plantings as well. But the first topic that we looked at was really this retaining wall that was at the edge with the proposed septic system, Leaching Hills is going to, is proposed to be located. And what we're looking to do here is kind of soften this plan instead of having one wall, we would do a double-tiered terrace wall. So, in this location, there would be a lower portion of the wall at elevation 46, 48 that would come down here, so we would have only a six-foot wall showing the plantings. And then this would be a three, two to three-foot wall on the top, all the plantings in between to kind of break that up and make it so that it doesn't appear as massive. So we've got landform coming in between and then landform going on the outer edge, plantings on the edge, and the plantings in front of this part of the wall at the septic system. We can put more plantings here, there's small protection, we're closer to the entirety of the wall, but with the new plantings, we don't need it except for one location on this corner now. The drop off here is only, is less than 30 inches so long either, at that location either. I think that would do a lot to kind of soften the view from Summer Street looking in and seeing a kind of terrace wall planting configuration with a bit of grass and then some more shrubs and tree trees removed, pears and trees. We're proposing some buffer plantings along the edge here, these would be evergreens and we're looking at pine and fir and screws along this edge here. The civil plan, the ratings, we have that at 15% on the civil plan, and we really kind of, that's really the only way to get from point A to point B up here. But we did just a little bit of refining on that to cross slope the driveway a little bit towards this infiltration trench, so these contours show a slight pitch towards the infiltration trench side of the driveway as you work your way up and down this slope. The detail for that trench is on the civil plan that I think you've already seen. The other thing that we tried to do here is to create a little bit more of a kind of rolling mound field with these contours, so the kind of, you know, it's just a little bit more of a natural landform coming down, and rather you see this contour is curving to create just a little bit more of a hill rather than just more of a, maybe more of an angled slope. In this area, we're proposing a meadow grass mix, these would be native meadow grasses that would really only need to be mowed maybe a couple of times a year. So that's going to stabilize the hill and kind of create a naturalistic look coming up the hill. We have regular, we use a dry taller and terracotta grass mix in this area here, and then as we get to the top, it flattens out a little bit, we can use terracotta grass planting sites of the drive, that helps with the keeping debris and runoff off the drive so it doesn't clog up the trench or just run down driveway and look messy as well too. We've got evergreens on base here, a few as you come around the corner, and then we've got some trees kind of framing as you drive up the side, on the left side as you drive up the driveway to the court. as you drive up the driveway to the court and to the garage area here. Mostly oaks and pines in this area. I was thinking that might be instead of a few red oaks coming to the driveway as you run this. We've got plant schedule, I will show the palette of plants that we're working with. This area that's hatched here was all the approved plantings that were in the civil set that was approved by the conservation issue, which I thought seemed adequate for what was going on in these, in this area here. And then we would add supplemental plantings on the edges here. You'll also notice that in this side, there's a cluster of trees that will be preserved in this, in this area. And I think that will do a lot to help kind of keep this side pretty tall, so the size of the house and the size of the hill and the grading changes will be kind of kept in scale that way. Some of the clients that we're considering for trees that we're looking at, where you see the tree symbols here, these bigger ones, I was thinking, you know, red oak would be probably a good, a good choice for that. I remember we've got a lot of oaks in this area. We could also consider things like maple, birch, and then some of the smaller trees, service berry, witch hazel, I'm sorry, there's much to know later what about, and mixed and dogwood or pretty good dogwood. The evergreens, we've got the list here of evergreens. So these sort of cedars, all these green giant arborite, maybe as a screen plant, some upper gemas as well. And then the shrub plantings that would be in that double terrace wall area would be things like bayberry, sweet fern, glow, sumac, red tree, dogwood, arrow, incorrect, and these would all be native plants as well too. So that's one of the things that we're going for as well. The grass mix is a, is a drought tolerant, extreme, no felling season mix, but it's mostly a fescue mix with some ryegrasses and just a little bit of the grass. And then the slope mix would be a bunch of meadow grass, dead grasses, rise, little blue stem, switch grasses and things like that. So that's the kind of overview of the plan. And as you can see, like I said, the main points of the locations of the plantings, the double terrace and the retaining wall, the septic, the meadow and the meadow here, and then the locations of trees as you can find with you as you come up the driveway and the buffer plantings there on the side, retention of these trees here as well too. So can you take questions on that or if you want to discuss something further, how do you do that as well?
I have two questions.
Yeah, a big one.
The existing trees that you said are there that are just above the septic system, are those really still there? Because isn't there just a giant pile of rocks right there now?
All the rocks is in this area here, but yes, these trees are still there. It's a little hard to kind of orient yourself when you're there. It'll be literally the foundation was going and that is back in that location. So these trees will be many in that area.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, I can appreciate the, this two-step wall at the driveway entrance. But what is, and I think the plan said that that was, and I was looking at, said that it was a, a, a forward wall with a.
Stone veneer, yes.
Say that again.
Stone veneer.
Stone veneer, okay. But the other wall that we were talking about was the one that was on the very steep slope that is just below, I'm using below because I'm not sure where north is, is it south of the proposed, that whole area in there? What is, that, that is not designated on the plan as the stone veneer.
This we can, this is top wall at 84 and it's really only a couple of feet tall as viewed because that's a steep slope, but that could be a stone, that could be a similar stone veneer as what we're doing in this location as well too.
And how about the wall in the, what I guess is the back of the house, the body in the property to the east?
This area here is, that's at elevation 88 and I believe that's a similar, we can, we can keep all the walls as a consistent, as a consistent look as well.
Okay. And then my other question is that it says, there's a note on the plan, I think, I can't see it anymore right now, but the, that it says structural engineering wall with fall protection. Can you clarify for me what fall protection looks like and?
The fall protection means that we're, we're really just looking at placing a fence of some kind on, on the top of the wall so that, because the grade is relatively flush with the wall, in this area here, we don't really need the fall protection. We had the original civil plan, that fall protection all the way along because it was at elevation 50 or so, and it was getting to be six or eight feet tall in this location. But since we're doing, we're doing plantings here and then we're doing this terrace, it's only two, two and a half feet high at this point, so you don't need the fall protection there. We only need it in this one little corner where the two walls meet. So that takes the fencing kind of away as a design of a reviewable element. It's more of a plantings and stone in this area here. And then up here, we would need the wall with fall protection because this is an area where it's, well, it slopes out fairly steeply, so we would have, you know, 30, 42-inch probably height, I would assume transparent kind of black fence that would be on top of this wall. That would serve as a barrier or safety, safe area against fall, against kind of falling off. This is a walkable surface off that edge right there. So that's really, all really fall protection is just kind of a, a low fence to prevent someone from accidental falling off that edge.
Other questions?
This is a significant improvement over the last plan. So I appreciate that the landscape architect's been given some discretion to improve the grading. I think the stepped walls is a much better strategy and the kind of lowering of the walls in general and the addition of a, a planting plan that's starting to, you know, that is cohesive much more than the prior one was. So general, I think it's much improved. I do have some questions. Just to go back to that moment where the septic field meets the wall, I understand how you're using planting to, in place of, you know, the fall protection, but you're, you're pointing at that corner where it makes a bend and you're saying you still need fall protection there, I think is what you're saying. So James, what is that going to be right at that corner near the 45.36?
Yeah, I think that, I think we just need a safety rail. Because the septic system is grass, we would put shrubbery on this side of the, of the top side of the wall. And then in, in the interior of this part of the septic field, we're not going to put in plantings, but we would just have the grass come up to the edge and just at this corner, because that's where we're going to have a little bit of a height, we just need about eight or 10 feet of, yeah, a couple sections of fencing just to kind of section that up because that's a, again, we would probably walk that surface up against that edge. So the fall protection again, just be a barrier or a fence, a transparent fence even. I mean, transparent again, doesn't have to be a stockade.
Right.
It can just be something that.
Okay. And you, you can, it's a little odd to just have a couple of segments of fence, but I guess you can work that into the plan so it works. So then, if you could zoom out just a bit, just a few more questions for you. So the, I see the evergreen planting at the edge that you're proposing as a buffer, which I think is a good idea. I heard you verbally say spruce, fir and pine, so a mix of potentially native species that are kind of natural in habit. But if you're talking about arboritey green giant, that's a very different thing and is going to look kind of pointy and like it's really is a screen as opposed to kind of a woodland edge. So could you talk more about your intent for that?
Well, I think the intent really is, when, when you look at the site, what it was and what it is and what it is in areas that aren't disturbed, it's a lot of white pine.
Yeah.
A lot of oak. So I think that primarily pine, white pine in this area would probably do, would probably work the best. I think since sometimes we, we dot in a few things like fir or spruce just to not have a monoculture in one area. So I would say that it's going to be primarily a pine planting. Maybe we would do something slightly on the other side or four, maybe carry it across. But, but I think that that palette would, would work well here. And then these could be deciduous trees. We're retaining this large oak tree right here, so I think that goes a long way towards carrying that corner. And then having a few trees, you know, either birch trees or, or something like magnolia or, I'd probably use the witch hazel on shady sod, just things like that. Again, just kind of soften everything, give layers of foreground to the hill. So then what we're trying to do is to create kind of an entry that you can cut in so that you've got landscaping going on on both sides and on the drive, on the trench. And like we said, the drainage is actually cross-slope to pitch toward infiltration.
Yeah, the drainage, the cross pitch of the driveway is much improved. It didn't look like it was even getting to the swale before. So my question is just about the planting schedule because you list arboritey green giant in there. I don't see any pine, spruce or fir in that planting schedule. The way you're describing makes sense, but it's not matching the planting schedule.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can just, I think we have.
That's a totally different.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, pines.
Yeah, pine or spruce or.
It's on the schedule, so.
Okay, so you revised that.
Yeah.
And then last couple of questions on planting, the, the shape of the meadow, I think that's much improved in terms of the character of the grading. If you're depending on the existing trees to remain as a kind of a buffer, I think that's a good idea, but I do see a lot of filling over the root zone of those trees given that steep grade that you're creating to, to create the berm up to the house. So I do wonder about the viability of those trees after you fill in over the root zone. You know, I can't tell from this diagramatic plan where the root zone stops, but I would say it might be impacted. So I'm wondering in that meadow zone, if you would want to thicken that up just a bit with a, with a mix of more of the same tree species that you're talking about as that driveway curves around it.
You're, you're talking about in.
I'm talking about, yeah, down in there, sort of in the curve of the driveway, if you would want to.
In this area here?
Yeah. I defer to you on where the planting goes. That's what I was talking about. But I, I guess my takeaway point is if those trees that you're proposing to remain, which I'm supportive of, if they are impacted by the grading over the root zone and some of them long-term don't survive, it just seems like it might, the whole plan might benefit from a little bit more planting of deciduous or a mix of deciduous and conifer trees within that kind of sweep of the driveway somewhere in that meadow zone.
The way we've got this, we're adding a little bit of this, you can see this hatch, this, this grass slope seed mix on that slope. And the contours went back to native grade kind of within this cloud, dark line, cloud of what you see there. And, you know, we don't have the survey of the exact location of all these trees, but there's a lot of different sized saplings and larkle and small ones. So I think that, I understand what you're saying, but I would be inclined, my, my vision for this really was to, when you, when you look in, you see the terrace, you see a little bit of lawn, you see some grass and you see some trees and then the house. And as you drive through, there's kind of enclosure and an open view looking up here over the meadow. I didn't want to fully enclose that in because it would kind of create a tunnel of that conifer here.
Yeah.
So I kind of like the open view over that, but we would, if we had to, we happened to lose trees because of the fill activity here, I would even want to find to add some maybe around the primary or these existent trees.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. Those are all my questions about the planting plan. We didn't address the stormwater management plan, so I just wanted to make sure we're going to get there tonight, but.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions about the planting plan? The landscape plan?
I think the grading is significantly better than it was before. It was much more natural now, like it, almost like it was in the original conditions. So that's a vast improvement.
Yeah, and you're right. No change there at all.
Okay, stormwater?
Yeah. For the record, Joel Fawza, Seaside Legal, 123 Main Street in Gloucester. Tim's on vacation this week, so he's having me in his place. I've gone through and read through the new bylaw that was just enacted on March 5th. And so reading through, it seems like, I mean, that's kind of like all new terrain because this is probably the first, if not the first, special permit under the board for this bylaw here. And it seems like the town did a good job of trying to make things easier, right? So hey, if you're in front of the planning board for a special permit and the planning board incorporates these conditions, you don't have to go to the DPW and go get a separate permit. However, I didn't see anything in the bylaw that said you couldn't still choose to do it that way. And what I'm getting to the point is, as I think Tim may have stressed at the last meeting, he's just super anxious to get some, something resuming onsite. And so although normally I would imagine going forward, if it came before to the client for a special permit, I would say it's the drainage in here so we can get it through the planning board, not have to go to DPW afterward. In this case, because this kind of, you know, dropped into place, you know, six weeks after that vacation was filed and this drainage plan is based on what the landscaping plan is going to be, I would ask that the planning board not include the approval inside of its special permit and say, no, you're supposed to go the old school way and go to DPW and get your drainage signed off by DPW. Otherwise, you're supposed to have a DPW, I think, review, it would be in the record, I don't know if that exists. And again, while I appreciate that normally, I would probably be all over that going, this is great, we can skip the DPW, just get it done here. This particular one, we would offer that we'd be willing to forego getting the approval from you and subject ourselves to the DPW approval later so that we could hopefully get out of here tonight with some sort of conditional yes. I think it sounds like a major little tightening of the planting plan that still needs to happen. We'd like to get out of here, some sort of, you know, vote that would allow the project to begin. And then again, we would have to obviously satisfy a stormwater requirement through DPW. And, you know, if we ran into issues there, the required revisions, well, that'd be our fault. We'd be stuck back here asking you for modification, right? There's no way in which we can sneak out and not actually do this. As far as timing goes, opposite things are very tight and we have to start getting some machines on that site in a matter of weeks to keep Tim on target for giving his kids into school fall of '26. We would rather just not avail ourselves of the one-stop shopping, go to the two-step process, not get the approval tonight from you on the stormwater and just go to DPW and make them do the, the approval. Again, I spoke to Tom and he seems to think that it won't take all that long to get the plan in place. But as you know, through public meetings, it would be a shame to submit, come back, present it two weeks from now, go back again, get the review, etc., right? It's another month or something that otherwise could be done administratively at town hall. And then again, if there was still lingering concerns about tightening of this planting plan, again, I know Tim asked her last time, we were a lot closer this time, hopefully the board has more comfort. If, if this is not exactly, you know, the, the final draft you're looking to see, if we could please just get a condition saying, hey, we approve this, we know these plantings aren't going in for a year anyway, but, you know, your approval is subject to returning for a approval of a final planting plan, you know, before X date or before whatever you'd like to set as the deadline. And I think if we can get those two conditions from this board, based on, I know I haven't been here in person, just me, I'm keeping up the minutes, which by the way, you guys do a nice job of actually following along what had happened previously. Based on my degree of the minutes, I think those were like the last bits of homework that needed to get checked off before this was ready to go. If I'm being correct, feel free to correct me and tell me what I missed, but I'd be the hope going forward.
Thank you. I will just for the board, follow up, Mark asked Chuck Cam if, if this was, needed a separate permit. And his, and Chuck's response was, you're right, the planning board can incorporate this stormwater bylaw into our, into your special permit and not necessarily a special permit with DPW. There's, that was always our intent, but I agree. Based on the plan provided and applying the bylaw, we would expect to see a stormwater report and an operation and maintenance plan. It appears it has not been done. I have our consultants review all of the above as a peer review. They'll be looking for $3,500 to be billed on a time and materials basis. It seems like a prudent way to go. Being the first time we've applied it and it may be more or less inconvenient, so we'll likely back and forth with the board. That was Chuck's response. And I believe Mark can talk with you over.
Yeah, we spoke last week. Yeah.
So just, that's, that's background. That's an interesting idea that you're proposing. My concern is the, you may have, there seems like there's some moderate risk in that the stormwater, this is a steep slope and the stormwater and has some pervious and impervious surfaces. surfaces in the stormwater could affect your grading or landscaping or, you know, the entirety of the plan. So, I mean, so I'm worried that you'll have to come back here anyway, potentially, if there's, I don't know. I mean, I can appreciate your need for time, I mean, you're time sensitive, but we also have to kind of make sure we're doing our job here.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I I would be a bit uncomfortable with that scenario because we're kind of responsible for the whole site plan and water flow is a big part of that. I would have hoped that either Chuck was here or that we had had a decision from DPW or some input.
Something submitted though, so they can't act on nothing.
Right, but what I mean is that things had already been submitted, right? Like that the process should be, and maybe that's not clear in our bylaws, that, you know, that DPW reviews the stormwater management and then we can take that into consideration when we're looking at the earth removal and the, all the site plan requirements and the, they're all very intertwined and I feel like we would be half approving something that I think stormwater is a big deal.
Couple more.
I'd be interested to know if there's an erosion control sedimentation plan for the construction phase, because that's one concern and we would need to see that before we felt comfortable with the equipment going back on the site, I think. And then there's the permanent improvements, which are some combination of landscape and stormwater. I don't feel that it's a certainty that the landscape will change. And I do think with the addition of the landscape architects, it's much improved. But I would, if we were going to move anything forward, I would certainly condition it on meeting all of the stormwater compliance requirements and having a way that if it doesn't, you know, by such date that DPW get, work would have to stop until, until, well, I don't want to say work would have to stop, but there would, there would have to be compliance by a certain date and that that would satisfy all the stormwater requirements and get the sign off by DPW.
Go ahead.
Again, I I agree with the way you read it and I think going forward, this board is going to see applications come in that way. I think what's important to remember is that this application was submitted, this bylaw wasn't in place, and so the application was complete as required in January. And it just so happened that as a result of some of the continuations, that this went on beyond March 5th when this became active. You know, we'll get into the the legal minutia of whether or not the bylaw becomes an active after applications, even the, like a Volbridge, kind of on good faith, saying we're happy to comply with it, we're just looking for the same way for some leverage. You know, you won't have any more of these because this is the only one that was sitting here in limbo when this bylaw landed. I think you're right, and normally we would. However, as I mentioned, this landscaping plan, the revision is done by the landscape architect, you know, twisted variables that are required to be, you know, set. And now hand doctoring go back and tweak drainage. Drainage has been designed throughout, there was the conservation commission last August. There's been revisions to the plan since then, as they revise the plan, they revise the drainage, but you can't get the stormwater report, the calculations, et cetera finalized until we get kind of the okay from the board saying, yes, this planning plan, at least in broad concept, you know, as far as areas, design, slope, looks good, then they can dial that in. And so even if you want us to come back before you and not go to the DPW as we otherwise would, that's okay. Also, I think, again, I would submit that a good midpoint would be allow foundation permit, but do not allow the building permit, so, you know, no sticks go up until these two items are settled. Because there's enough time, you know, you say, yeah, you can get to a foundation, then you have to stop until we've given you the okay on stormwater and planting. That's enough time to get the stormwater and planting dialed in, come back here before you and get those approved, whilst allowing some forward progress in the project to get the foundation dug, maybe the concrete poured. And then if we haven't gotten the approval, things pause because the building inspectors, you know, are going to see that no building permit is authorized under this conditional approval until those last two ends are checked off.
May I ask you a question, Sarah?
Of course.
Would you mind bringing the plan back up?
Yeah, let me see if I can share it again.
While you're looking, I appreciate the urgency for what you're intending to do, for the idea of where, where is the pinch point? Where is the hotspot that you need approval for to start your work?
We need to be able to begin moving earth again on the site and begin digging.
Everywhere?
I mean, we ought to get the, the outline of the driveway in and get up to the foundation.
And rough grade the driveway all the way up?
Get up, yeah, and then.
And then what?
And then hopefully, you know, dig a hole, it'll be a few weeks to get that foundation and between the digging and the forming and the pouring.
No blasting at all?
I don't know what they're going to run into when they get up there, to be honest. That may not be, it doesn't mean shirking, that's just me genuinely having a blind spot and I'm sorry about that information.
Okay, so the foundation.
Do you have any geotech up there? No, geotech, no.
So the foundation of the building itself and the access to the building is where you want to start?
Yes, that we could move forward with that, that keeps them on on track and buys them the time they would need to finish these last two components and still give you the leverage, you know, of of saying, hey, nothing's going to be built until you do this. And if you put a foundation in, you have to look at your foundation and play tight rope on it because you're not building a house until we've signed off.
Just a second.
Yeah, sure.
So the grading, the grading of along the front, front slope and on the back and everywhere else will be held up to some point well in the future, is that what you're here to say?
So the the final grading that's going to be incorporated in this planning plan, all that, all that's going to happen, you know, months, if not a year from now, but, you know, when this project's going to be on the other side of things, right? In the meantime, they're going to rough grade and access up along, you know, typically you come in where you're proposing to put the driveway, but they'll rough grade that out so that machines and trucks can get up and be, and don't see any of this finished final grading happening.
So I I agree with, I agree with what Laura said, there's got to be a construction stormwater runoff.
Erosion and sedimentation.
Yeah, and sedimentation.
You got one already?
Yeah, so when we went through conservation, there is a stormwater report for the old design.
Is there a plan in place for that though?
That would be for the old design. We've changed the building location and the driveway, so that's why we have to update.
If you'd like, if you'd like, you know, silt socks, you stay.
We have waddles shown on our plans also.
Oh, as part of the approval of any kind of, we say, you need to have that erosion in place.
And and long temporary access, that's a fine condition, say, you know, in temporary access to be, you know, you know, guardrails by, you know, waddles or socks or whatever, that's totally understandable.
Yeah, that's when all the soil's loose on the site.
Right, and that's easy, that's easy enough, that condition.
Wouldn't you have to go back to Concom if it's changed so much from their approval of their?
So when we originally went through Concom, we're proposing work in the vernal pool buffer, so then we apply it through conservation. Now that we've pulled everything out of it, we really don't have any interruption within the 100 foot buffer that hasn't already been approved, which is the common driveway at the bottom. I can't show my screen, so.
Yeah, there's no, there's no sites, the original approvals, you may recall, I believe the conservation commission and this board approved a separate design for the two lots and a common driveway. And that previous common driveway actually required, you know, I think like much higher walls, it was just, you know, made sense on paper, didn't make a lot of sense in reality. And so then they tried to adjust that, they went to Concom saying, well, if we can get everything down, if we get a little closer to the vernal pool, Concom said, we better use, just keep the walls high and get away from the pool. And so they're trying to solve the issue of making the site more palatable in this direction through your board, just outside the wetland buffer, so they're not triggering any new, for the site specific improvements, the common driveway staying as it was approved by this board and the Concom. And then what's happening site specific doesn't require additional Concom approval because we just kind of left that alone. And instead, instead seeking to modify through your special permit, the onsite design.
Did you approve the common driveway when we did the ADR?
No, that was pretty, that was already approved. The ADR was not a part of that.
When did we approve?
When did we do the common driveway?
2022.
I believe, um, what was it, random?
Yeah, we did a long time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So just the erosion control.
I just want to also correct, just in terms of chronology, I opened your special permit application and the date is January 17th, 2025. The storm, just to clarify, the stormwater bylaw was passed at the November town meeting. So in, for sure, it applied. There's no, there's no question that it applied.
It wasn't approved by the AG until March 5th and that's when a bylaw becomes valid for a town.
It becomes effective on the date of the town meeting.
Sure, sure. But had, had this been a two, a two meeting review, we would have been in and out before that, yeah.
The applicability is the town meeting, the date it's voted, not when the AG, not when the AG applies.
I understand that, and then we still would have been to DPW to get, to take care of it.
Anyway, just, I just wanted to make sure that we clarified that. Laura's got a question. Go ahead.
All right. Oh, I was actually, I will ask one more question. When we talked about stormwater last time, you said you had managed it to the kind of extent practicable, that there was no particular criteria for retaining stormwater on site or infiltration or anything like that. So it was very hard to judge what the stormwater management was actually accomplishing. So I know that would be part of the stormwater.
Yes. The stormwater permit would be, it's one inch retained on site post development runoff. And then it's mass stormwater handbook, so it's standards one through 10. We've actually been working on it, so it is, it is in the book soon. So it's just, one, no, no more, no new discharges, two, reduce peak rates, we can size, we've been sizing the patio area in the back for the roof runoff, so that's all collected and recharged. The patio driveway helps, but we're not really looking for recharge there because it's not, it's a big area, but collecting the driveways more are our concern, so that will be with the infiltration trenches. We're getting the volume there, it's just we need to tweak it a little bit more. So, yeah, we will be doing a full blown stormwater report and design according to mass stormwater.
Okay, and meeting those requirements.
We have a very, very explicit condition stating as such.
But this design here is not far off, it just needs to be put together with a bow on it and have the numbers corrected, everything like that. It's.
Well, we sort of ponder this, why don't we see if there's any public comment? Any public comments? Sandy Rogers, go ahead.
Right, thanks, Sandy Rogers, thank you too, old Essex Row. A couple of things. One is, based on the last meeting that was held, there was a request to create the field and maybe some of the walls to be not just manufactured looking or manufactured terraces or the, you know, stone wall veneer, but to actually look at a more natural type of scenario, maybe with, you know, boulder rocks in the field and, you know, I know you have to take into consideration the safety issues with the heights of the wall and everything, but as you get down to the street, it looks very, I don't know, it looks very manufactured more than natural. So I just wanted to bring up, that was a request of the board actually, to look at that. And based on what I'm seeing, it looks like, you know, putting some plantings around the driveway and down at the bottom and, you know, just like have a grass field and just, I, I think that given what was taken away from that area and, you know, just the, sort of the nature and the naturalness of the approaches on the main road, that that should be considered. Second, regarding stormwater, I'm not sure about just having a channel on the driveway and having the pitches, but with the stormwater planning, there might be a need to look at some interim, you know, where it's coming down from the house, I can't see it on the, on, on the diagram right now, but you might need to have to consider sort of where it comes down partially to help mitigate all of the runoff coming down all the way down the channel into the street. So it would be very important to see the details behind the runoff. It's such a major road and it could also impact all the plantings. And I just want to also reiterate what Laura brought up, having the plan for erosion during and after building would be extremely important here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Pierce?
Hi, thank you. I'm not sure if this has been addressed by the fire chief, but I just wanted to ask, with the plan on my screen, wait, is, I can't see the whole driveway anymore, but from before, it looked like it was quite a curve to it. And then with the added slope, with the issues we've had with accessing properties of long winding driveways with that curve, is a fire truck able to get up and around that and has the fire chief weighed in on that? And then I also just wondered, where is the nearest water supply or hydrant to that area gap?
Can I respond?
Yeah, I'm not sure we can change where the hydrants are, but go ahead.
Yeah, you can't change where the hydrants are. But the, for your concerns regarding the driveway design, that is all off of the town, the latest fire department design standards. So that radius, I believe it's a 50 foot radius, with, that's the maximum pitch that you can get within the 50 foot radius. We have the hammerhead at the end of the driveway, it's not the most aesthetically pleasing, but that's your turnaround spot for the, for the fire trucks. So, yeah, we do meet those, the radius into the hammerhead are based on the design also.
Okay, and just to clarify that prior question, that all the walls right now you're proposing, even though they don't all show it, stone, a stone face on a retaining, on a.
Yeah, we, we've removed a lot of it.
Retaining wall.
So we would be doing cast in place with stone veneer. And for the septic, I know that they, everybody's looking for, including some of you, we're looking for boulders at the end of the driveway, but we need, there's not much room between the septic field and the drive, the driveway and the common drive. So we need as small of a wall as possible because we need our separation. That's just the septic design, so we can't really tweak that. But, yeah.
Okay, Sarah, do you have another question or comment?
Uh, no, I'll put my hand down. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have a, the written statement from the fire chief? I don't think I've seen it.
No.
Because usually we get that from the fire chief.
Shannon, do we have anything from, has this been submitted to the fire chief?
No, ma'am, I'm not aware of that. Of course, I don't have access to Mr. Resnick's email, but maybe he's had some discussions, but I, I, number one, I haven't heard anything in the office about it and I don't have anything in my inbox about it.
Do you have a record of the? We haven't filed with the fire chief, not that I know of. It is to their design standards, somebody does look at it, he will see that.
So you used design standards with no consultation with him?
We used.
Not a bad thing.
We received the standards from him, I believe, so I, that's a good consultation.
It's part of our.
It might be another box.
And then to that, and to that, we, of course, we wouldn't have any, any knowledge if the applicant reached out or not, so.
Which is usually as part of our process, ask the fire chief, please.
I think we're still, they're missing. I think what I've heard is that the applicant would like us to consider a sort of conditional special or interim special permit for purposes of foundation. And then they would return with their, maybe more details on their landscape plan in terms of specific plantings and a stormwater approval from the DPW. Fire date. Just, I'm just, I think that's what they've asked us.
I might say, but this isn't even a partial approval, this is something that allows them to get going on their foundation and then rough grading into the interest route.
Right.
But we're not approving anything yet.
Right, but I think until they have a go ahead from us, the building inspector has said they can't move forward because of the cut and fill.
Approval.
Yeah, a special permit, they need a special permit.
So we have to draft, or Mark has to draft the language with the conditions. It's going to take a while.
Right, it's not.
So we, what we need to do is come up with conditions that we can give Mark. So what we need to do is come up with conditions that we can give Mark that he can write into the approval. Then we review them at the next meeting.
There seems to be, I'm sorry, Laura.
I was going to say, I think that we could write our list of conditions tonight, we could verbally write them. And then maybe circle back to the building inspector and make sure he's come, and the fire department. But the building inspector with a question of, can we approve a special permit for the purposes of a foundation only as a Part A? And then do the building...
We actually did with, of course, on church property.
Did we?
That's what we did, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a reasonable way to proceed. And I think the conditions are, you know, close to hand here, so... Yeah, it seems to me that we're not, at this point, object, this is a single-house lot, and we're not objecting, many of the things we've discussed have been addressed or are in the process of being addressed, but not fully.
I would suggest this, I haven't been on the other side of the table many times in this situation. There has to be something hardened fast to that design now, that that roadway will run that way, and that footprint will be there.
I think you're saying they're willing to take the risk.
They will, yeah, understood, but they'll need to confirm all that before we give an approval of a special permit, even with the condition. It's just tough to go backwards.
I think what we tell them, if there's any modifications to the plan, we have to get a new special permit.
I don't know that we have a process in place to just approve such a small part of a special permit. I think the cornerstone church, with it being a Dover amendment, that was a different scenario. I don't know, I've never seen a process in place that we can piecemeal a special permit. I mean, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, we just legally don't have a process for it.
No, but I think we're granting a special permit with a bunch of conditions.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So, yes, just to be clear, my request, I agree with you, you don't have an interim special permit on your bylaws. This would be an approval of the special permit with conditions post-approval about the privately planned and the stormwater. So it would not be a partial approval, it would not be an interim, it would be an approval, but before, we're in addition, before you get past the foundation stage, you must have stormwater signed up for DPW. You're going to throw in things like, the fire department signed a letter saying you've got the grading. And then as far as locking in, just to say it one more time again, we are willing to lock in that driveway location. It's about the drainage next to it is what will change, and only change slightly, as he understands it, we happen to represent a few, and say, yeah, this driver is showing you what the grades is established by the landscape architect. You know, we can commit to those tonight. We're not, it's not very ephemeral, it really is about the drainage, about the specific, you know, plant species and locations. Everything else that you see in that plan...
It's also about that stormwater management plan, preconstruction and...
That's a stormwater report.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, it's not going to require the driveway you're looking at to change. It may require the drainage trench to change slightly to the driveway and its location. And, to your point, if you start going in, and we're coming along, you know, a rough cut of that driveway, we're not going to be 20 feet off target because, oh, we have to move it because of the drainage plan. We're not that far back, we're pretty close.
Forgive me for this, but having done this a billion times here, when you think where the building might go, and then you find out this ledge there, and the ledge is immovable, or it's too deep, you end up moving the building footprint, and you change that roadway, and you do change things. So it's, I appreciate everything you want to do, I appreciate you need to get going here.
But that can happen if you...
Something has to happen, something has to happen that we can grasp onto saying, they've got this, they've got everything in place. The next step is building upon that versus modifying and changing it.
But to your point, with all due respect, even if we had a drainage work done, and then we go check all the stormwater standards, and then they get up there, and there's way more legend than I thought there was for the building foundation, we're still at the same exercise you're describing, right? So I don't think we've, you know, this isn't to cut corners or shirk responsibility, this is about just trying to be pragmatic and work within the process. We tried to show, you know, making a real good faith effort here to push us forward. If you have a landscape architect, boom, got a plan in.
I think we're trying to figure out how to make that happen. Does this building, does this building have a basement?
No, I don't think so.
No slab on grade?
Slab on grade?
Really?
I'm pretty sure. Tim, are you still there? Tim Curry should be like surprised.
I could be wrong, but I thought I talked to Tim Ross two years ago.
I'm here.
Tim, are we slab on grade or are you digging a basement?
There is, just because of the way it does slope so much. We are digging into the hill a little bit, but on the downside, it's aberrate the basement. So technically, the backside is basement, but the front side, lowest level, is basically slab on grade with windows looking out.
So can I ask a question about, I mean, you're here for 6.4, which is the earth removal. And can we just get some further clarity of, you know, in the letter, you're saying over 3,500 cubic yards are removed, which is a lot of earth removed. That's like, that's like an equivalent of 90 to 100 super-large dumpster things. Are you going up and down that driveway that we're not clear really what's happening yet? Or, like, what's the movement with all that? And then are you, are you able to say you're not going to do any more blasting now? Like, is that done, since that happened before the special permit anyway?
I can't speak too much for what's been completed on-site. I'm pretty sure he's done the majority of the blasting at the top of the driveway at the turn, but I don't know if he's moved further towards the house. Regarding the memo and the 3,500 cubic yards, that's based on the standard in the bylaw. That's earth moved, so it's not removed. It's, all right, we have this area, we're doing 100 cubic yards of cut, and this area is 100 cubic yards of fill. Earth moved, we have 200 cubic yards being moved, but it's a net zero. So the net for the site actually was closer to 300 cubic yards, so it's relatively even. Yeah, I believe it's a fill, I don't remember off the top of my head. But, so the retaining wall areas do help fill in that area where the hammerhead is, and along the sides of the house. But yeah, so that's where that calc comes from. And that calc, it is skewed because with the driveway, you don't include the driveway in the calc based on the bylaw, which is interesting. So you don't include the driveway, the house footprint, and the septic area. So it does tweak that, but when I did the full site calc, the septic area is all built up. When I do the full site calc, we get around 300, 400 cubic yards.
But I think, I mean, at least for myself, I won't speak for the board, I'd like to know if there's going to be more blasting, because that will dictate other things that we have in our special permit.
We won't really know until we have to try to get to grades where the house is. He hasn't, I think, I wish Cap was on, or Tim, because they would know where they were with the blasting. But, yeah, that calc is solely based on existing condition and proposed grades, not what's left they have to do.
So test pits were done?
At the top of the hill?
Yeah, or anywhere along the roadway too. Roadway is susceptible to it.
So the test pits were all done in the septic area and along the common drive, but we didn't do anything up on the hillside.
You're doing a mound in septic system anyway, so...
Yeah, that's why it's built up with the walls.
But not in the actual foundation area?
No, not yet, so there could be more need for blasting. But it's all solely based on what he finds there.
Wow.
Are there, man, I'm sort of picking up on Mary's comment a little bit. Still, when you go out there, there are these giant boulders. And I'm trying to figure out how that, where those are going, and how that... You've got this lovely landscape plan, which is smooth. You have these boulders that are the size of boulders. I don't know, I don't know how to size boulders, but anyway, they're big, some of them. How does...
Does that make a difference to us?
No, no, but I'm just sort of trying to figure out where they actually go. Like, do they, is it really, is there enough topsoil there? Is there, how does that, do they get buried? I mean, you know, this is a nice, smooth plan, but I don't know, I look out there, and there's a mound of loose rocks. And we were out there with our crampons on.
Yeah, I can't speak for how many boulders are really out there, but I can say that with the cut-fill analysis, where we were close to a net, it was... So whatever you pull out of the ground, we get the grades to relatively match overall. But in the end, like, if there's a bunch of boulders, you're right, you will have to find a location for them. So either they'll be buried, or maybe we could utilize them for retaining wall. Or, because we do have four-foot walls in some area, but maybe they're, you're on the side of the driveway and just be kind of redecorative. It all kind of depends how many boulders are on site, I don't really know.
Yeah, I know, but it's not just a, you know, we're not sculpting a pile of topsoil in here.
No, it's not clay.
The other thing is...
How deep is the soil, like, where all the plantings are going and everything with so much rock there?
Soil depth is probably a important thing.
I don't know at the top of the hill.
Are these big trees going to be able to survive and thrive?
All right, so they're getting about four feet depth for each of these test pits. Those are a little bit lower on the hillside, but that was the septic area, about four foot depth.
And let me ask, the other question that I always ask is, I'd like to see us put a lighting, no uplighting condition on this. No lighting up the trees. Dark skylighting. Especially given that it's up.
Why did you have one, I'm sorry, the entire roadway is permeable? Is that correct?
Just the parking court.
The parking court, the actual roadway will be?
It'll be regular pavement, and then will infiltrate.
Not a stone, not a stone, a loose stone?
No.
And what would be the drainage collection along the side?
That will be three-quarter inch stone.
Three-quarter inch stone, so it's meant to just continue to percolate right straight through, and not to actually collect and...
Yeah, but it's going to have a certain volume to reduce the peak rates. So when you get up to like a 100-year storm, if you get eight inches of rainfall, well, you have to account for that volume, or at least reduce the rate of the existing condition. So that's going to be the goal of the stormwater report.
So your only hard surface here is the roadway and the roof, but that's all to be collected, retained?
Yep.
Not discharged, but just slowly percolate down?
Yeah.
Do you have to hold?
Yeah, so you have to do the capacity. I think the third standard is the recharge, so where there's the recharge aspect, and then there's the reduce the peak rates and hold the storm. So, and that's all in the hydro cap modeling.
I mean, one of our site development standards is sites shall be designed, building sites shall be directed away from the crests of hills. So this is kind of the dilemma here, I'm going to maybe go out on a limb a little bit, but the dilemma here is that every build, every lot of land is not always buildable. And here we're trying, this is forcing, not forcing, maybe, there is, you know, you've articulated a number of times that this is a tight site. And I appreciate the, you know, money was spent, and, you know... But I guess I feel like this is a stretch on a lot of things. And there are alternatives. I mean, and I guess we have to, there are alternatives. The question in my mind is, how does this plan meet our standards? And that's, there are always alternatives, right? So we have a set of standards on-site development that, you know, land disturbance shall be reduced. We talked about plantings, placement of structures shall not detract from scenic quality. Building sites should be directed away from crests of hills. Sites will be designed in a way to prevent impacts to rare and endangered species. We don't, I don't think that's applicable, we're not aware that's applicable. Preservation of existing vegetation, revegetation, limited clearing, finished grade shall preserve, match, or blend with the natural contours. I guess we're moving, making progress on that. Topsoil, a minimum of 18 inches of topsoil shall be placed on disturbed areas where proposed plantings, the trees or other woody plants shall be, we should include that standard. I'm not sure what the right standard is, but...
Well, I would think the landscape architect would include a soils plan to show where the required depths of soil are. And if we ask for a greater buffer of planting, as we've been talking about tonight, and we've heard public comments about, then that would also potentially change the soils plan. So that would be another condition that we would make, you know, final planting plan, final soils plan. Maybe we're asking for a thicker wooden buffer, just to mitigate the extensive amount of clearing on the site and the fact that the building is, I don't know if it's at the top of the site, I can't see the context of the grading around it, I can see that it's cut in a little bit on the backside. But given that it is very prominent, and there's a big open area in front of the building, which is dropping away, then that might be something we'd want to consider.
So Sarah, to your point, I think it merits the planning board discussing the applicability of the site, which is right in the earth removal bylaw. Number four says, protect the natural landscape. Ensure that clearing and grading activities will not excessively alter existing landscape, vegetation, water resources, or natural systems. So it just then becomes a discussion of, does this project have to excessively alter the landscape in order to build? And what's our threshold with that? You know, we're seeing it in some other areas in town, and those weren't in front of us, but this one is. And so I think, yes, I think we as planning board members should probably discuss how excessively we think altering landscape is within our realm. Let's say, yeah, that's good, or no.
So what we're suggesting, actually, is a reconfiguration of that design. That's a major, major change. Is that in our preview? Or that building wouldn't be at the top of the hill, I guess?
It's not in our preview to redesign somebody's plan.
Right.
But we can deny a permit, which then forces appeal or redesign.
The outcome to saying where the, how long to get there.
So that we can condition, we can deny, or we can approve, with or without conditions. But redesigning somebody's plan is, you know, we can make suggestions, but, you know, but there are always alternatives, right? You know, septic, how many, I don't know how big the septic system is, but a smaller house needs a smaller septic system, you know, there's carrying capacities. And I'll just say from my own personal experience, we bought a piece of land that we cannot build on in another town. Fire beware, long story, but I've been there. I have bought land that is unbuildable. So it happens. You know, I'm not suggesting that this is unbuildable, but I'm just reminding us that not, that because we endorse an A&R plan, we say this every time we endorse an A&R plan, right? This was an A&R. Every time we endorse the A&R plan, we say, this doesn't mean it's buildable. And it's just important that we distinguish between the two, right? I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm simply reminding us that, and I think we don't fully exercise our special permit review sometimes. And I'm sorry that it's you guys that it's, but this is pretty visible. So I think we're having a little bit of, a little bit of a philosophical discussion, and you guys are party to that, but yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much. So going back through the, it wasn't simply an... Thank you so much. So going back through the, um, it wasn't simply, we did approve a common driveway that went into both lots and looking at, you know, there was a post-house location was actually closer to the, the main road, but still up on the hill, but still elevation like sixty-five, seventy up there. You guys, you know, approved kind of stray shot driveway with a guardrail on it, like, and that was, that was okay in two thousand twenty-two. This is, you know, so it's not a question of is this a buildable lot? We already have an approval that was done by the last owners through this board. We just, you know, think, I think it's more we agree that, you know, we're trying to make this better than what has already been approved. So I think we're at, you know, a denial doesn't mean this work doesn't happen. Denial means what you approved in twenty-two happens. I don't think anyone hears when we go plans in twenty-two. And then plans, you know, before you go, yeah, we'd rather the stray shot driveway with a guardrail on it. Like, I think we're all trying to get to a better situation. That's why it'd be clear that if there's a denial, you know, houses go up. It's just not the house that the hoffs want to move their family and become part of their community, right? It becomes, you know, stack houses that, you know, that we're.
So just to clarify, a common driveway application doesn't give us the authority that a special permit application does. And so the reason we, you know, we didn't take a deep dive on that because we're limited on the common driveway criteria. Now you're here before us because of a trigger of this earth, uh, um, rule. And when you went to actually do your civil engineering for whatever was proposed then, you might have been, might have triggered these same things. So I don't know whether they would have been triggered or not. So it's kind of a conjecture. It's not, um, we were looking at the common driveway and it's not, but now you're here for a special permit, which is a higher level of review arguably, but certainly will within our, um, and the town has increasingly, we've been telling the town that we, don't worry, special permit is rigorous and we stick to the standards. So, um, we're trying to stick to the standards and be respectful of landowners, I think. And that's the dilemma, because we kind of have an incomplete application still with the stormwater question. So they're asking us to kick the stormwater back to the DTW with at risk.
So how does that work, Sarah? They, they, you know, they look at stormwater then? DPW looks at it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They hire, they hire consultants. And then the goals with, for Chuck Dam or whoever, the PE, the DPW to review it so we don't have to outsource.
I think they may outsource it. That's up to them.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, what I heard from your reading of Chuck's letter was that they were gonna hire a consultant. So I would feel, whether it came before us or went before DPW, the people I want reviewing the stormwater plan are the engineers who are qualified to do it. Right, absolutely. So I, I know I can look at this plan and say, you need a stormwater plan, you need an erosion sedimentation control plan for construction, but I don't need to be the one to say that technically meets the requirements. I think that we, I think that some of the things we're struggling with in the special permit are the difference between things that have a clear performance requirement, like dark sky lighting. Right. We know what that is, black and white, or the pun. But what's an excessive alteration of the landscape is at our judgment. And so, um, there is an area of trees being retained. We might want to think about one in our spare time and we, you know, continue to evolve our special permits that maybe there is some percentage of vegetation that's retained or that there's a size of tree that's retained. We could put all kinds of requirements on there or guidelines. But barring that, I think we have to use our best judgment. So I, I feel like we have enough information to talk about the visual impacts and how to mitigate those. I think the grading hasn't improved greatly from, I was very uncomfortable with it before and how engineered it looked. Again, no disrespect to the civil engineer. I think that the addition of the, of the landscape architect has been a real benefit to the mitigation of the impact on the community. I think that we could call for some conditions regarding how much vegetative buffer, the type of, you know, native type plantings, the character of the wall and who details the wall. Again, I would say that would be a landscape architect and not a civil engineer in terms of the aesthetic qualities of the wall. And a civil engineer can make it stand up, that's fine. And then, you know, and lighting, anything else we want to condition in terms of mitigating the, um, view shed impacts from one twenty-seven and kind of keeping that character, I think that we have enough to do that. And then strongly relying on DPW and their technical consultants to ensure that the stormwater is right. So what I was hearing is ask Mark to draft some conditions that, um, uh, detail some sort of conditional stormwater review. That we get greater detail on the landscape plan in terms of specific plantings, topsoil, uh, or grading, you know, topsoil. Can I, can I respond to that? I think, um, you know, all the planting plan, a final planting plan, a soils plan, um, I, I would say that I don't need more clarity, but I think that it could benefit, um, James, from, from some additional woodland type planting. I understand the kind of opening and closing of views. I'm fine with that, but I think that there is a lot of clearing. The house is prominently sighted and planting trees that will grow tall over time and help to kind of mitigate that and create a natural buffer that's thicker would be what we'd like to see. And, um, so crossing off anything from the planting plan that is, you know, arbority or something that is a quick growing screening plant, but instead a mix of native species.
Um, Madam Chairwoman?
Uh, yes.
This is Shannon.
Go ahead.
Hey, um, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, um, given Mark's availability right now, can I suggest that the board might reach out to council instead?
Yeah, we'll figure out how to make this.
That was my comment.
Okay, thank you. Um, we need to figure out what we're gonna reach out on. We'll figure out.
I, I have a list of conditions.
Okay, good.
We've been talking.
Okay, I'm memorating them down too.
So the first is approval of the driveway designed by the fire chief. The second would be that the walls are lined with veneer, stone veneer, and that the plan with the final design be submitted for approval. That the submission of a stormwater management plan be prepared and submitted by May first. And it must be approved prior to, uh, uh, construction of the, above the foundation. The fourth is a planning of revised or final planning plan, uh, to include additional buffers. And maybe we can work on that language a little more. And that the, um, that the special permit conform to the, uh, uh, statements of purpose in six point four point one.
Do you want to add lighting?
Lighting.
Oh, and lighting.
And, um.
Dark sky lighting.
I think we also want to hear back from you about blasting, um, what the blasting, proposed blasting schedule is and then we can respond to that. Can I make one clarification of this, conditions, and I know we stated this, but I want to make sure we're explicit about it. So before any, um, earth moving can commence again on the site, we need to see that erosion and sedimentation control plan that needs to satisfy Chuck Dam.
Just the plan doesn't need to, because typically it's a part of the stormwater report.
It should be a part of the stormwater support, um, but if we're, if we're making a date, say it's May first, if anything that you need to do on site prior to the complete stormwater, if that's the case that you're making, then I would say at a minimum DPW needs to approve your sedimentation and erosion control plan.
I, yeah, we can do that.
So you'll have to submit a building permit to get the foundation permit anyway, construction of the foundation. When, when are the plans done enough to be, to actually submit that plan now?
I mean, it's a curious question.
Yes, they're good to go whenever, um, you have a kind of approval.
And is, is, is the permit to build your foundation contingent upon the special permit?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, alright, so this is, this is the starting point.
I would add a blasting plan.
Sure.
Schedule or blasting plan?
Blasting plans?
Yeah, we don't know what, because we have, the planning board has adopted the, the blasting regulations. There's certain things you can't use, you know, there's, there's all sorts of, um, there's that, yeah. But we, the planning board has a separate that's not, um, I don't even think it's on mine. I'll just throw it out there. I mean, I'm so hesitant approving a special permit that has so many conditions right down to, we haven't even heard from the fire chief yet.
Well, I think we're not, I'm not suggesting that we're approving anything tonight. I think that's, we need to see a draft of these conditions. So, um, sorry to disappoint you, but, um.
Well, we could get the fire chief.
Yeah, the fire chief can happen quickly. But, uh, I think that's the, so I think we're asking to continue the public hearing. Let me just ask, is there any additional, um, public comment? None. Um, I'm gonna ask for motion to continue the public hearing to add, uh, and to ask Mark, to draft these conditions.
I ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the purpose of continuing is simply to get the conditions finalized for this approval of the special permit that will require additional information before they're allowed to go up from the foundation.
Yeah. Does that seem?
It seems like an extra step to me.
That we would have to have a, continue the public hearing?
That, yes.
I think we always review the draft of the conditions before.
Right.
Before we vote, okay.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Yeah, we would review the conditions before we vote and then it, they could be drafted and issued the next day. You know, if, if it's a.
So are we saying that we, at the next meeting, that's when we would review?
Review and, and I think we're gonna, we're asking you guys to get to Mark and Shannon, the blasting schedule, what your plan is for that, and the erosion and control and sedimentation plan in advance of the stormwater. And the fire chief. And the, we'll, uh, Shannon will get this to the fire chief.
Yeah, and we could probably, like, in that two week period, we'll probably start looking more into the stormwater and that might come across your desk as well.
Yeah.
That's, like, I've been working on it, so that is part of the long stuff.
So my suggestion is that we, that we ask for a draft, draft set of conditions being drafted. What we might do is take a quick, uh, discussion of them on April seventh, not as part of the public. If you can, you know, just sort of look at the language, see if there's anything outstanding. Then we reconvene on April fourteenth with the continued special permit, uh, public hearing. If everything is, uh, uh, reasonable, we'll have a draft set of conditions that we can prove. Mark can issue the special permit in days after that and, um, then, um, things can proceed. So, um, so a, a motion to continue the public hearing to April fourteenth at seven PM.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, whatever.
Okay, thank you. Um, great, thank you. And, uh, Jim Emanuel, nice. Gordon, did you recognize? Jim, you're back here in Manchester, right? You were here for a very long time, a couple years ago?
Yes, that's correct.
You would, remember he checked all the plans for the high school after Ben Gary's license?
I don't remember, but, oh, yes, oh my God. Don't let me think about that.
Welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. Um.
Whoa.
I know. Gordon and I were both.
Traumatized.
Right here in that room. For those of you who don't know the story, right here, we were getting, about to get the tennis court approved after, they were supposed to be the first part of the high school. They weren't. It's got, oh, the high school got built, the tennis courts are still fighting, the D E P, or no, the Concom.
I remember that.
We had the, we had the votes and to, to, you know, we were counting the votes of the Concom. And Tom Walker said, and he said, I checked Ben Gary's, this cute, this adorable landscape architect who had, I think, license number three in the state or something. And he said, I checked his license and it's expired.
Expired?
Like twenty years ago.
Whoops.
At which point we asked to continue the hearing. And Jim came in and was hired to review every document of the entire plan.
Wow.
Forty million dollar plan for, uh, and restamp every plan.
Oh, good for him.
Yeah.
Good for us.
Quite exciting.
My gosh.
Anyway, alright, so we don't have to do that, thank God.
So Sarah, I just have one concern related to the two oh eight summer. All of our agendas have stated two oh six Summer Street, two oh eight.
The applicant is two oh six.
Yeah, the applicant, but the property we're discussing is two oh eight.
Okay. Shannon, can you make sure that our agenda is going forward, say two oh six, uh, two oh eight, um, Summer Street on behalf of two oh six Summer, the, uh, the correct LLC, your applicant name?
Absolutely. I'll trace that immediately. Um, and just for the board's knowledge, uh, that was not me.
Whatever. Okay, um, any liaison reports? Actually, let me before I do that, any other, uh, public comment on this or other issues? Thanks, none. Um, any liaison reports?
Nothing from the last meeting.
Okay. Nothing else? Any other matters that we hadn't, uh, received? Okay, so our next meeting will be April seventh.
Are we doing the minutes?
Oh, yes, minutes. Yes, yes, sorry. Yes, please, let's get some of these minutes off our table. Thank you.
They were the biggest part of the, uh.
My value added.
No, 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 you have a lot more value added than that. Um, let me get back to my, my meeting.
Could we take them separately?
Yes, we have to, because we have a number of people who are, um, not, we have people who are things. Okay, so.
Two ten was the first one.
Yeah, we're on, I'm on the wrong page. Okay. Yes, two two. Sorry. Are they in the folder now?
They're in. I definitely read that in the minutes folder.
They were just in the. They were not in the minutes folder.
Documents folder.
Oh, yeah, here we go. I was looking for the word minutes instead of, so let's start, uh, January thirteenth.
January thirteenth, I didn't see that one, not two ten.
I think you already approved January thirteenth. No?
No, you haven't approved January thirteenth yet.
We haven't, okay.
You brought it up, but it wasn't present.
Okay, any, um, have a motion to approve or amend?
I'll make it moving.
Okay, Gordon, you moved the motion to approve the minutes of January thirteenth. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Peter Morton, a second, any discussion?
I'm ashamed, I didn't see that one in the packet.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed and one abstention. Great, thanks. Alright, thank, thank you. Um, February tenth?
I just saw one typo on February tenth.
Okay.
Line two, page two, cat should be cut.
You caught that.
She read it, she actually read the minutes.
You know, Sue, I was about to say.
You got that, Shannon, line two, page two should be cut, not cut.
Yes.
I was absent from that one.
Um, any other, oh, Laura was out of that one. Correct, Laura was absent, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of February 10th.
So moved.
For the second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? And Laura.
Laura abstaining.
Laura, all in favors, you know, except for Laura, okay? February 24th?
I have a couple of notes on this one.
Okay.
I was present, but I'm not listed.
Yeah.
I'm actually not listed on several of these. So I should be listed as present and then.
I'm sorry, Sarah, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you, no, it's all right. And then I'll bring this up on another one too. There are a couple of comments that are attributed to board members who aren't on our board. One says Gary on page four.
Right, I saw that too.
Yeah.
I think that might be Chris.
I wonder if it was Chris.
What was the comment?
I don't remember.
If you guys want to set this aside for the moment.
Okay, page four, Shannon on that one, that was my only.
Okay, and I wasn't listed as present either.
Are you, are you Gary?
Yes, I was.
Is that when I was away?
It might have been away then.
I think that was the one. Yeah, that was the one I was away, so.
Yeah, you already reported conservation commission activities.
So I was not, so Laura was present, I was not present. Double checking. That was when I was not present at.
Maybe it's Mary instead of Gary.
Well, maybe it's Mary.
Oh, maybe this.
What did I say? No, but if it was, was saying.
Something about Gary.
This is, this is on my thing.
So do we need to, you want to take this one up or are you going to fix this? Or is there a fix?
Well, we don't.
It's not particularly substantive. If we don't, if it's not attributed to Mary, maybe we just cross it out.
Oh, you can motion to amend and then, you know, accept the amendments.
Well, it's a liaison person, liaison to the conservation commission.
Oh, that's not me.
Oh, is that you, oh.
Yeah.
What was that typo?
It said Gary. Is that you, Chris?
No.
This liaison to the conservation commission. Do we have?
We need one.
Maybe Gary will do.
Maybe we should strike, strike him.
Yeah, it's pretty detailed.
What does it say?
Yeah.
It says, survey completed Newport Park, ongoing survey of the Plains area, discussions about.
Oh, no, that wasn't.
That's Chris, yeah.
If you, so you are, you are Gary.
Well, it was on affordable housing, not the Concom.
Affordable housing, not Concom.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think instead of Gary reported on the conservation commission activities, it should read Chris reported on the affordable housing trust activities.
Yes.
Okay. So that's on. Page four, the last page. Shannon, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay, on the liaison reports, it should say Chris reported on affordable housing trust activities. And I think we're good. Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve as amended to February 24th. Ben Vince, is that change and Laura was present and Sarah was absent? Okay? So I have a motion from Sue and a second from Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
And I, Sarah's abstaining. Okay.
You're being.
Excellent.
It's missing on the list.
March 10th.
There are two March 10ths. There's a 6:00 PM and a 7:00 PM, so that's two different meetings.
Three of separate minutes.
There was one that started at 6:00. There is no.
You had a meeting on the 12th, didn't you? I saw you, but I did. You did have a meeting on the 12th, I wasn't there on that one.
Yeah, so the one that's.
I think I missed that.
I think they both had 3:10.
Yeah, you were.
So when was the public hearing for them?
I was on the 10th.
But zoning changes.
Same for the month of March.
Are you seeing two? Wait a minute, I'm just going to, the 10th, we had one on the 10th and the 12th, yes.
Yeah, the 12th.
Yeah. So let's.
The 10th, okay, so I'm not listed again on that one.
Missing you there.
I was there.
Yeah, she was there.
And my ear was on the phone.
And then, I'm looking at the right one, on page four, it says planning board member Darius.
Darius, right, I saw that.
Which day are you on, the 10th?
The 10th.
I wrote the 10th down.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, I had a couple of comments on the 10th, but I wasn't here, but I didn't.
He suggested making it a condition.
It was you.
No.
Suggested making a condition approval of a landscape architect be brought into the certain timeframe.
That was me.
Darius.
Definitely not Darius, and I was there.
Darius.
Okay, so let's start at the top of the page, March 10th, 6:00 PM, we did start early.
Yes.
We want to, at the top, members present include Laura Tenney.
Yes.
And Mary and Peter were absent, Peter was.
I did, that was the.
June 2.
Oh, no, no, you were sick.
Right, but I was on.
Yes, Peter was on Zoom.
Yeah, he was on life support. Yeah.
Right, Peter was on Zoom, so he was present and Laura was present. Got that? Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, and then we go down page four, do page four.
Can I do a couple on page one?
Just do the page four first of all, board member Laura Tenney suggested is the top line.
Yes.
Well, this is done by recording, some part came out.
Oh.
Darius, Laura Tenney.
Okay, Mary, go ahead.
Under the approval not required for the 3034 Pine Street, at the end of the first paragraph, it's Deer Hill Road?
Yes.
Not just Hill Road.
Oh, right.
And then the third paragraph.
Hold on one second. Shannon, you have that, Deer Hill Road, page one, the.
Absolutely, I have that changed as well, thank you.
Great.
And then the third paragraph under 3034 Pine, last sentence, it says he clarified the zoning district shown on the plan as D2 and R2.
Yeah.
They don't have an R2.
Correct, he clarified that zoning district was shown on the plan as D2 and should say not R, comma, not R2. And I, when I signed the plan, it did get changed. So his plan showed it as R2 and we asked him to change it to D2. So to say D2, comma, not R2. Had shown it. All right, any other changes?
On the third page.
Page three?
So page three in the middle with her public comments, Christine Delicio is on Lincoln Avenue, not Clinton Avenue.
Okay. You got that Christine Delicio is on Lincoln Ave?
Yeah.
Very good minutes though, I like the.
They're good, yeah, they're good.
I like the detail, thank you.
Okay, I'll take a motion to amend as, approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Gordon seconds. And Mary is not, cannot vote, but everybody else can, all in favor? One abstention.
Page should sever.
Okay, and then the other one that's labeled.
March 10th.
March 10th as well, is actually, should be March.
March 12th.
The, the date of it should say March 12th and then the time was 5:30.
Yeah.
And it was Sarah, Chris, Laura was not here.
I was not here.
I think I was here, I was here on that one.
You were here.
Oh, that's a foreign call.
On the 12th?
Oh, yeah, this was just a, this was just on Zoom.
I was not here.
It was.
So this is, wait a minute, is this the 12th?
Maybe it wasn't, okay.
This is very correct.
It's very mysterious.
Got it?
And it was just five of us, we didn't have just four of us.
Four of us, we just barely hit a quorum.
Right. It's just three of us.
We're just. Make sure that this isn't.
Three of us and. It was online. Yeah.
Yeah, you were on.
It was online again. I'm the virgin.
Were we all online?
Yes, the 12th, we were.
It was just a Zoom call.
Just making sure that this is the right one. No, because we had, this is the 10th. Can you go back, Shannon, we did meet on the 12th, but that was just a Zoom, a short Zoom call? Not sure, were you, I'm not sure you were even in it. And the, it looks like you have included the.
Yeah, there's.
The 10th at 7:00 is the. I think we need to go back and.
This is not what we did that night.
No, it's, this is, this is not what we did on the 12th.
Okay, we can set this aside for now probably and I repeat this one and I resent it.
This is actually what we did on.
Well, this one, this one.
And I, and I do, they, they, the board of.
So Laura, let me, this is actually what we did at the, on the 10th.
This one is in the meeting packet, it says the 12th.
Oh, maybe I'm, oh, there are two 12ths.
Oh, there are two 12ths.
There are two 10ths.
No, two 10ths.
Two 10ths, one 12th.
Well, I'm not seeing one that has the 12.
Yeah, this is the one we had the three to one vote, keep the maximum size, 12.
I remember that discussion.
Yeah.
This is an agenda, sorry, this is not the minutes, I'm sorry.
No, she's looking at the agenda, okay.
I'm sorry, never mind.
The 12th, I think, is not right.
Yeah, the 10th is correct and it started at 7:00. So the, the incorrect is 6:30 PM and they're straight at the beginning.
Okay, let's hold on the 12th, but then we're pretty up to date, so that's good.
We just voted on the 10th, did we vote on the wrong 10th?
No, we didn't, no, that was.
Oh, we didn't.
Just double check when you, that the 10th is.
10th, all right.
I almost, just go back and just take a quick look at the tape of the 10th and make sure that the minutes do reflect it, we did approve them. But I think some of the detail. That might be because of the Zoom that cut off, that was the day, the 10th was the day on Zoom. So maybe it was.
Yeah, two separate, it's two meetings.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, let's just, you and I, we can check in on that. Okay, any other business? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.